Okay.
To Carrie's and work there is in West Dallas gourmet raised Krispies.
Yes, oh my gosh.
Yes.
Well, we have employees of that Carrie's Krispies on Tuesdays. Um, and we have the sell them to the staff, you know, give them an opportunity to have them and then our kids fill the order. It's magic.
So I will, I will.
For you the order form so that you can also participate.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thanks, Gassy.
I'm working really close to that place. So, okay, a referendum update. So means, yeah. That's what I'm saying, okay, sorry.
Oh, let's continue talking about the good things we're.
I know, it feels good.
So we're just looking to provide you with. Update how last meeting that we had. At the annual meeting kind of looked at the financial aspect of the referendum and also just the district as a whole. So want to take a little snapshot of um, the conversations we've had on initiatives related to the referendum specifically. And I would just say Deidre Christie carry at any time if you've wanted to. Free, um, this is really the district show, not just mine, so um, as you all know, we uh successfully passed a referendum in April. And the the initiatives related to that referendum were to ensure that students remain safe, supported and successful. Uh, so that referendum um was for two million dollars per year for the next five years and this year being the first year. Uh, so the intent was to put one million dollars towards staff retention and recurring costs within the district. Um, and then the rest towards safety, technology and curriculum initiatives within the district. Um, so the. So tonight, just going to look to to kind of. Couple of these areas. So a safety I mentioned um in the previous board meeting meeting that we are engaging with eight ATS to. Uh revamp our security camera fleet throughout the district. Now, this is one of those initiatives that you know is not as fancy, you don't necessarily see that, but we see you, right? And so um, there are cameras throughout the district now and um, but there were already, but we're updating the fleet and we're adding to it. Uh, so we've, we're looking at about forty eight cameras have been added so far. And throughout the course of the project, looking to add over a hundred views throughout the district. Uh, so when we initially scheduled the project, um, we were hoping that we could leverage non-student days and. Primarily work on those days such that by the end of the school year would be completely done. There's a lot of this project, as you can imagine, which is just someone standing on a ladder, installing a camera. And that's something that really can be done when students are in class and then when students are in the hallways, you fold up the ladder and you wait a couple of minutes and then they keep working. So as a result, uh, the initial plan was to have the high school done at this point and then kind of. Continue to work throughout the district. As we sit here today, the high school Blakewood and Luther are all done. Um, so the middle school is going to be the last school that we do in June. And at this point, we're on schedule or really ahead of schedule to the point where we're looking to have this project completed. By the end of by the in the next four months here, so really coming up quite quick. Um, so Bill Wesley has been doing a tremendous amount of work with this entire project, programming the cameras. Uh, so each camera that is added might have multiple views on it. Um, so making sure that those views are programmed within our system that administrators can utilize the camera system efficiently. And so far, it's been moving very smoothly. So this whole entire project is some three hundred thousand dollars and we're very excited to have it completed um within this this school year. The other and safety initiative, another safety initiative we'd like to discuss is traffic. Um, so we discussed in the last board meeting, obviously, we have changed the traffic pattern and student drop off and um and pick up. Uh, here at the high school and middle school campuses. So you have to imagine back in April when the referendum was passed, we. As administrative team decide, okay, we need to get bring in a traffic study group of tra- traffic engineers to professionally assess the situation and make recommendations. Were able to secure a contract, get them in in May. And they were able to observe several days of traffic and then it took them about a month and a half or so to actually. Put it together and give us the thirty nine page reports that we have that's posted on the district website. Uh, so the goal tonight isn't necessarily to go through everything on that document, by all means, feel free to go through it, it's on the district websites, but just to kind of go over some highlights. So, um. Like we discussed the last board meeting, door eight, which is right over here, um, has been closed for a student. Entry at the beginning of the day and for students to leave at the end of the day. Uh, so I can included us the a screenshot of the aspect of the report which specifically notes that door eight should be. Closed and that traffic at the high school should be oriented towards the circle drive on the other end of the building. Uh, so we were able to communicate um. With the community about these changes. The principal at the high school, I was able to send out daily videos updating. Making updates as we went along, um, hearing feedback and trying to be responsive to that free feedback. Uh, we are still hiring for crossing guards and I will say, so we currently have one. Who is staffed with us and is doing an amazing job on fifteenth and Cherry. And then after she helps middle schoolers cross, she actually goes to Ross and on um. Fifteenth and Maple and help students cross there. Uh, so we are trying to to fill other positions um at the beginning and the end of the day. Um, in order to get fifteenth and and um and Beach staffed as well. As well as helping out with the other end of the high school, but as you can imagine, it's been a it's been a tough bit of a tough journey. Getting additional staff to 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 want to do that. Um, oh, that looks like the video is playing one second here. So. Some think the city on, so I'll just say that obviously we don't own the streets. There's a, there's a limit to what we can do as a district. And it really takes a partnership with the city to do a lot of these initiatives. Um, and we've have a a good working relationship with the city and so far so good. Um, I've had several meetings, the city engineer and um, just been talking about what's next. And trying to look at that thirty nine page report and try to discern what is really within the realm of possibility and what isn't. Um, so I've included a couple screenshots here, we are looking to add bump out crosswalks along fifteenth avenue. At certain key intersections, so such as on Beach Walnut and Cherry Streets. Uh, so those concrete bump outs would work to provide safer crossing for students and would also. Um, calm traffic down and make it slow down a bit such that students can cross more safely and efficiently. Uh, so there is, you can see there's sidewalks on both on this image as well, I will just note and emphasize that. That aspect will really look working on the with the city, nothing, none of this has been definitively defined and. Decided upon yet. Um, discussions are preliminary still, we're still working out the technicalities and really getting designs. From the traffic engineers who initially did the study. Uh, so that we can discern what is within the realm of possibility here, but as we look our crystal ball, if you will, as we would project ahead. Uh, we are looking at at least those crosswalks in this image here. And also, uh, one of the higher priority initiatives, it would be adding a beacon, a traffic beacon. Uh, for cross for pedestrians on Ross and Avenue immediately south of the elementary school. Uh, and you can see that in the image directly in the bottom right of the screen. Uh, so to help students cross the streets instead of potentially jaywalking across Ross and providing more safe crossing there. Some aspects that we're not considering within the report, so there are some aspects that are just cost prohibitive. And some things that we've just come to the conclusion practically wouldn't would not really work. Uh, so as far as cost prohibitive initiatives are concerned, you can look at that um, that that roundabout on fifteenth and the Parkway. Um, likely not something that we can do within the budget or timeframes that we're looking at here. Um, it would also cause a rather large disruption to the population as the community of South Milwaukee. Um, definitely something that the traffic engineers recommend and can, there's definitely value to that. Uh objectively, as far as traffic mitigation is concerned, but not something we're pursuing at this time. There were also a couple of recommendations relating to moving the playground at Ross and Elementary. And as you can imagine, if you're moving a playground, just building a playground is astronomically expensive. Um, so we really did not entertain those possibilities. Um, that doesn't mean that we have, we can throw those things out wholesale, there are aspects of those those ideas that we can still take into consideration. But for the most part, right now, the the emphasis and our our time and efforts really going towards getting crosswalks. And but concrete bump outs on fifteenth avenue and along Ross in there.
Oh. Be located, is that?
That would be on the Parkway and fifteenth, but that's that's really not on the table, yeah, but that's a nice little image. Yeah, so.
Um, there were also some suggestions, if people have read the traffic study about altering the start times between the middle school and high school, um, kind of significantly, but. Again, those are ones that we thought that's such an inconvenience for families. That we did not choose to pursue a few of the other things that they suggested because. The value and what it would bring just seemed to the negative parts of it seem to outweigh. The value that some of those pieces would bring, so we really tried to take the report. Um, and I will say, share with everyone that the city of South Milwaukee has been incredible to work with through this whole process, they're such nice partners. Um, with us as a school system and the new city engineer has been out front. She's met with Diana a number of times on different things that have been suggested in the traffic study and so. We're really grateful to the partnership and to the support, um, and. That's allowing us to sort of filter through some of these things that the traffic engineers gave quite a laundry list of things that they would suggest we do. Some are great ideas for us and others just probably aren't realistic for us in the process.
Just for the people out there, what's the current drop off times and what was the, so what were the ones that we didn't accept?
Um, well, the current drop off times are the same as they were in previous years, right? So we kept the start time the same at the middle school and at the high school. Um, they would have suggested making like the start time of the middle school, a good twenty five to thirty minutes different than the start time and end time at the high school. Um, that's right, that would be the kind of difference you'd need to only be having one set of traffic, but then if you were. A family trying to drop off someone at the middle school, what they. Would recommend that then you come back again a half an hour later, and so those aren't suggestions that we thought were realistic for anybody.
This. The crosswalk south of of Ross and that we added. Trying to kind of imagine that, so like on fifteenth is a crosswalk and then what is that seventeenth?
This one, yeah, it's before the seventeenth.
Right in between?
Yep, yep, so there's actually, so on this image here, there's actually, you can kind of see where that sidewalk goes north. Um, there's, that's actually one of the entrances or the entrance to the parking lot at Ross and so be right across the street from that.
Trying to diminish like the the traffic issue, I don't, I purposely don't drive by that way. Will be that helpful to have? I mean, we're talking like twenty five feet.
Yeah, so the what what the traffic engineers noticed, there were several students crossing, jaywalking.
Do it anyways, we might as well make.
Yeah, so it they go exactly, so it's it's one of those situations where that that road specifically is quite heavily trafficked. And you have young kids crossing Ross and jaywalking really, and so this provide, they're going to do it anyway, like you said. Providing the safer avenue with a lighted beacon for them to cross safely.
Yeah, it's siphon the kids in that direction because fifteenth and Ross and, you know, kids are walking against the light all the time, people are trying to. You know, cut in different directions in the intersection when they have the right of way, but. You know, some kid juts out. So, yeah, if you're able to pull the the foot traffic. Even, you know, a little bit in that direction.
Yep.
And part of it is the just the visual that that reminds people to slow down and pay a bit more attention as well, which is part of what they noticed. And I even noticed as I've been out there paying attention to the traffic patterns and parking far back to watch it is. It's not super obvious that there's a school there until there's a school right there, right? And so that some of what they just want to make sure that we're bringing the attention to the, you know, hey, there's a school right here and we should be slowing down and those kinds of things. Crosswalks seem to help that quite a bit.
It seems like the people driving up fifteenth and while either direction, it's it's already contentious and people are already. You know, aggravated behind the wheel with the bump outs add that aggravation, is there going to have to be like? A learning curve.
It would certainly be a learning curve, yeah, so the the main thing, the priority is student safety, right?
Yeah, which this.
Across the street safely. Um, so there would, there'd certainly be a learning process in order to to make sure that. That cars can move and pedestrians can move together. Um, but with that priority in mind, you know, the. Having communities that have those bump outs, they find that traffic usually slows. And they're less likely to speed through even when there's less traffic. Um, so. The exact ramifications, we'll have to see, we could, we're having even discussions about, you know, can you put cones out to kind of test this out before you actually put concrete down? Um, those are suggestions within the study and things that we're discussing at an administrative level. Um, but it certainly would have an impact on traffic.
Slow, the the, you know, the study show that traffic actually slows.
Correct, correct.
They regularly added one of those at the turn where I dropped my sons off at high school and. The community was up in arms about it before it got put in, um, right? Because it was different and that's going to make things go so much slower, has not been the case. Um, it actually has made things move so much more smoothly to be able to take the left hand turn, you have to. In order to get on the road to drop them off at the high school, so. It, they have been a tremendous advantage to just that being so much safer for cars and for foot traffic.
Yeah.
Would one of these bump outs be like right before you turn into the middle school, like kind of round like circle?
Yeah, so if you look on that that image to the left, you see Cherry Street, that's like the entrance of the circle drive. And then immediately north of that will be the exit of the circle drive, so there'll be some bump outs, you can see that kind of bumping out into the street on that image.
So there were cones out there a handful of days. Um, kind of like not having, not allowing people to drop off directly in front of that driveway and then. There was a little bit bit of congestion, I will fully agree with people like dropping off ahead of the cones and then trying to merge back into that lane. Um, uh, but. It'll be interesting, like, I like the idea. What would be? Um, but I I is the goal, I think, I think the goal is to um and keep me honest. Obviously, the goal is to keep the kids safe, but do we want the kids to be dropped off on fifteenth avenue be like in between in the four section?
Yeah, so. Uh, so the four, I'm trying, yes, the four, yeah, I was gonna say between Cherry and Walnuts, uh, or really Cherry, between Cherry and Beach. Uh, is is all you can drop students off.
Right, so like, yeah.
And we did make a video about that and sent it out to the middle school families, which did help a bit to get people moving further up versus. Making some congestion at the back end, that helped, but it's a little bit at least to keep traffic flowing out there.
Yeah. Um, so yes, we we would want to encourage. Traffic to to drop off um between Cherry and Beach. Um, because with a lot of that problem that we do see south of Cherry is people parking or at least dropping off immediately at Cherry.
Right.
And then moving on. Um, so they can do that, but the problem is you've caused congestion south of Cherry. Um, so one of the, one of the issues that you saw with that, those cones was it was kind of a drastic, and now here's the cone and stuff. For gradual, right, not to say it's not completely. It is a little drastic, but it's, you can see it in the image there. You come up on it, but it is elongated a bit more than just having two cones there. Um, so if we were to actually put cones out to, you know, show where the bump outs would be, we had have them out for a little period of time, we'd look to have. Probably a little bit more sturdy cones and something you could just drive over. Um, but that's. Other communities have tested it out in different, different methods and we're just trying to weigh our options at this time.
Maybe construction barrels.
Yeah.
See how that goes, yeah, and like Nancy, these are not. We've paid for them and they're in the works to go outside, but they are part of what we're continuing to pursue with the city to figure out if they are the right next move for outside. And does that work with some of what the city has planned as well? Um, because while we'll be contributing dollars to do all of these things, the city actually has to do the work too, so. Um, making sure that we're doing a few of the things in front of Ross and those are in the. We're committed to and a bunch of those things are actually in the works to be happening and some of these other pieces, we're still. Trying to make sure that that is the right next step for how to solve, continue to solve the problem that we're having. I will say we have significantly fewer students. Running across the middle of fifteenth every morning, so our goal of. Addressing some safety concerns. We have made significant progress at addressing some of the safety concerns and um. We're not having some of those, this was new to us, drop off issues that we were at the start of school either, so. I think it was definitely a move in the right direction and so some of the other things that they suggested as people who do this for a living, because the same thing, Andy, I looked at some of it and I was like. I don't even know what that would do, right? Um, but for the people who do this for a living have already served us quite well and some of the suggestions they've made, so we'll keep at it and. See what we can do to always be addressing the student safety.
I have one question, I went through, um, I went past Old Creek High School on their drop off time or pickup time and I noticed that they've got like the the signs, obviously, but they've got like. It's, it's a, it, this is flashing, right, it's fifteen miles per hour in this, when it says flashing beacon, is that what that means like that?
So that one specifically on Ross and would be less about speed limit, but more, but it would be flashing. Uh, it would be like a student crossing, so if a student wants to cross the street, they hit the button. Immediately, they start walking and then it starts flashing automatically. Um, the exact mechanism will have to iron out, but there will be a flashing light saying, hey, there are, there's, there are people crossing here, so.
Kind of like. Quantify when we know we've. Been successful with this, like this is in the next year or so, like what if had, how would we judge at the end of this year if it's like, you know what, we don't actually need this stuff, like what's, what are we gonna look at?
Yeah, so I think that's where the the testing with cones comes in, we we try it out and we be outside, we take a look.
I don't necessarily mean like the the bump outs in particular, just like the whole. Project of of traffic on fifteenth and Ross and.
Yeah, and I think so, the tricky thing is that it's noticed in the report. We're going to have at times of high traffic at the beginning and end of the day. And we're going to have to learn to live with it to some extent, it's not a completely solvable problem. And it says that in the study and it's more of how do we make things as safe as possible for kids? And try to work within the constraints that we have, um, so.
Is a harder thing to quantify though, right? Because how many cars are currently traveling up and down fifteenth, like? Well, we didn't really, I mean, the traffic study counted and did all of those things, but just on a few smatterings of time. So it is a harder thing to say if we reduce traffic by ten percent, well, we have no way to measure that.
Without. And and.
To redo the study again, so, and that would be a lot of expense for. I'm not sure if that would be the measure we would look for, some of how we're measuring right now is just. The difference in what you can, you know, if you were out there doing traffic in the morning a year ago versus now. We can physically see quite a bit of difference. Um, and some of it is the feedback we're getting from parents as well. Right, and so those are kind of the metrics we're using right now, but it is a really hard one to say. You know, I can, it's, cameras are easy, we had this many and now we have this many, right, like.
Like all these different numbers.
Like those are easy to come back to the community and say, here is the thing that that actually did. This one is a bit harder for that, to find the actual measurement that we would, we would have, because fortunately. We haven't had too many students get in accidents or whatnot out front, right? Which is what we're trying to prevent, so certainly there's nothing to like reduce when it comes to some of those things, that's a challenge.
For me, it had me with fewer breath, I've seen these breathtaking moments, just this once, I had my kid rush across the street because I'm in a hurry and. Every day there's one or two kids that, parents that used to do that. And if that goes down remarkably, that's a goal.
Right.
That's a goal.
Yeah, we just didn't have numbers, right, and you want to make sure that anytime you invest dollars in something, it has a measurable outcome. That was just harder for us to say, okay, now we've finished. With everything that we can do around the traffic and the traffic in particular, that's a hard one to know. Okay, that was just enough things to do or not quite enough yet. Um, but we'll keep at it and keep getting that feedback from the community and keep watching as best we can and just report back as often as we can. Um, on what we're seeing and and how it, it's, you could tell the difference, but the measurements are a little tougher.
And I would just say, it's not like, let's just say a year from now, we we get these bump outs and we we think it's working okay. It, it's not something we just wash our hands of and say, mission accomplished. Uh, it's, we got thirty nine page report that we can look at all their efficiencies to make. It's just at this point, these are the things that we're saying we could do in the next year.
Creating, you know, very quick and easy drop off. Or how I could tell this.
We don't want kids running across the street and every, in every area. And we've had kids that have been hits, you know, on the corner and we've had. I like time here in the district, you know, we've had several kids, um, and so. Yeah, to your point, I mean, hard to measure, but um, I think the fact that we don't see as many kids running across the street. Is already an improvement, so.
So a couple of weeks ago, there is a group that was on ninth and Milwaukee, I forget the who the name was, but they actually were. Speed checking cars, the fastest car going down Milwaukee Avenue, do you think how fast it was going? Anyone? Fifty three. So what Clint mentioned. Bump outs and how they work with, you know, people slowing down. Is if it's twenty, if you're hit by a car that's twenty miles or lower, your chances of survival are like eighty, ninety percent. Once you get over twenty miles per hour, it's exponential on you having some serious, serious injuries or fatalities. So knowing that there's a lot of speeding, I think a lot of this, when these bump outs are built, people will get to. Will get to use them and understand why they're being used. Um, and then hopefully it'll not be the racetrack that it used to be or. It it just makes sense to go through with with all of these, if it's a minor inconvenience to a couple of people. That are upset about it, I would hate to be that family that was upset that their child got hit. And we didn't use our referendum money to improve our drop offs. And then I know that we've got fifteenth in the Parkway, but I think we all know using fifteenth coming south. You basically, even if you don't touch your gas, by the time you hit that bottom, you are at thirty, thirty five, and that's just without touching your brakes, so. I know we didn't look at this and and that that area. But we all know as people in South Milwaukee that as you come down that hill, unless you break, you're going to hit that intersection thirty, thirty five. So I don't know if we're going to look at that eventually on that end, but I'm glad we're focused so far on on this node of travel. I know with the crosswalks, I've seen some less drastic use of also not a big bump or whatever that we see across. On South Shore, I know in the new construction over in Cudahoga, they call it, um, it's like a hump, and this is this little mellow one. So even if you went across it, I think the way it's designed, if you went across at twenty five, you'll get a little bit, but you're not going to get completely. Um, bounced around in your car. Something else that the engineers might want to suggest that still during that time off time, people coming through. Will still be conditioned to try, drive at twenty five through this intersection, so I think it's a lot of education on all of us in South Milwaukee that. This little sec, these sections are very important that we do follow the speed limits for safety, which is part of a referendum.
Another aspect with safety is we have been testing out a um, keyless lock system with Proxess. Um, so we have, we've set up a couple of these locks and looks just like the image shown here on the presentation. Set these up in the district office and with the, within the operations department and have just been testing on that, testing them out. So the way this is different than say our external doors is it's Bluetooth uh powered instead of um. With a, with a hardwired connection to a a FOB system like you have on our external doors. Installing one of these is a couple hundred dollars opposed to installing a hardwired keyless entry is several thousand dollars a door. Um, so with it being Bluetooth, if the internet goes down, you can still use it. Um, if the wifi goes down, you can still utilize it, there's several different keyless lock systems that utilize wifi or a hardwire system into the network. Um, so we we like the the flexibility of this system, um, we also like the cost of it. Um, so we've been trying to look at it and determine if it's worth beta testing at an elementary school. Uh, so we're, I would say we're at the concluding phase of testing it in the district office and we're more seriously considering. Feel testing it at a school. Um, and we'd be, if we did that, we'd be looking to probably do that in the springtime, um, to try to test it out a little bit more and get some more objective data from from staff. As to how it works, it does require a different FOB than what we utilize on the external doors. Um, and there are some ways to be creative with it, you could potentially put it on the backside of an ID card and in the external doors on the front side of the ID card, so then you have one ID card. That gets you in and out, um, but these are just different, that's a downside of the system. And we've been trying to see if that downside is. Still worth all the benefits that we see, namely, you can instantaneously shut down any door that you need, you have that digital. Log of who uses what doors, if you give a FOB to a substitute and that substitute decides not to come back, you can shut down the FOB. If you give a FOB to a substitute and that substitute decides not to come back, you can shut down the FOB. And also it's worth noting, all these doors can use the same. As what we currently use, or at least for the most part. Um, so as a result, you can actually use the same physical key and not have to rekey all the physical keys. You can essentially keep that. And have a, have a digital system as well. So we really like it so far. It's just a matter of making. Other options, Proxess is fairly proprietary. Um, so there's not too many other systems specifically that utilize Bluetooth. Um, there are other school districts that utilize this system, uh, one specifically in Wisconsin. We've reached out to. All these different places and they've received very positive reviews so far. It's fairly new, so in the. Feel, it's been in the field for about six years, which is a bit shorter than some other lock systems that have been out for like twenty years or so. Um, but we liked what we see. And looking to test it at an elementary school.
So just to interject, I've been doing security at Summerfest. We have something like this. So the GN key works on everything. You can as, you can have like a little FOB. You can also put it on someone's ID card. Um, out of all the locking systems that we have in that ground. This is the one when we go to do security and we see it, we're like, okay, this one, we know exactly how it works. And if we have the little FOB, we can open it. If the FOB's disabled, your GN key opens it. It, it's a very good system to use for security. Plus, as you said, you can take the FOB away, you can, and the person will be deactivated. So it works quite well.
This question because it really is, um, assuming it runs off battery.
Yeah, so it does, it runs on WGS. Oh, and that was something we were a little critical about, like, okay, how often do we have to replace these? And what's the deal if you have it externally? We're not looking to do it on an external door, but we're in Wisconsin, right? So like. What does the weather do to these doors? Um, we've found so that we have obviously been testing it for. Little over, I'd say, two months at this point. No battery needed to be replaced. Um, the users say that it's maybe like once a year that you have to replace the batteries. The deal is since it's going off Bluetooth and not say wifi, it's not constantly on. It active, it turns on when you have something within the vicinity that can connect to it. So it's not draining battery twenty four seven. And that's actually one of the key highlights of it. Um, so it's something we're critical of, but so far.
Yeah, it's really similar technology to what hotels are going with in a lot of cases now, like where they can send you a mobile key and you can open up your. Hotel room from your phone versus actually going to the desk and getting a card. It's very similar to that kind of technology. So we have an app that we can use to unlock the door or you can use.
And did you say these will not be used in external?
No, no, because the external doors are good. We we have, we have a hardwired of keyless entry system for our external doors. And that currently gets us, you know, the data that we need, right?
Okay, good.
So the the other, another update we wanted to bring to you is technology. So, um, Brian and I have been working closely as far as getting new. Uh, new line panels into our classrooms. We just approved in order to get, um. About fifty thousand dollars worth of of new lines into our schools. Um, so this is. Integral into helping maintain our fleets. Uh, so tech, the technology department has received an additional about three hundred thousand dollars to help maintain. A replacement cycle within the district, um, to to help ensure a uniform standard of technology throughout our classrooms. Um, they have also done a tremendous amount of work on the network and that's something just like the cameras doesn't really. Give you a lot of press, if you will. It's not something you see very easily. Um, but as we're adding security cameras, as we're looking to potentially add. Um, locks, keyless lock systems, we have to work on that network in order to to add the ability to. Get the technology going. Um, so we're making progress there as well. Um, we have hired on three new STEM teachers and have been working in our classrooms. In our elementary schools to add STEM spaces. We have a video hyperlink on this, this presentation showing the, the. How some of that work has been done in our classrooms, changing it. Uh, from what it was in the previous school year to a more, um, innovative STEM space. Uh, so this is something that we've been really proud of and we, students have already been seeing a lot, huge benefit of that and teachers as well.
Um, if you haven't seen that video yet, um, I would highly encourage you to watch it. It's actually, um, we purchased a time lapse camera. So it just took pictures like over this and you can see how quickly a room goes from what looks like nothing to something. Um, and again, credit to our teachers who have put in so many hours getting those rooms and spaces ready and our facilities team. But if you haven't watched that video, I would highly recommend it. It's pretty, um, awesome to just watch something evolve. That's so amazing for kids.
That's something that we've intentionally wanted to give the teachers the the ability to kind of see what their students are interested in, how the curriculum goes. And then give them the ability to potentially purchase additional material. Spaces. So we're excited to see how those spaces evolve in the next couple of months here and even the next couple of years. Um, it wasn't something that we wanted to buy a bunch of fancy things that necessarily didn't get utilized. Um, so they look very great now and we're hoping that it continues to get even better over the foreseeable future here. Oh, let's see, keep going here, huh?
So with this STEM programs, how will we afford these three teachers after the referendum expires?
So we're hoping to continue to make efficiencies as we keep going here. We're also hopeful that as we get into the next biennium budget, the state might be able to supplement that difference. Um, but the long short of it is if we continue to see. The benefits of this program, we might ask the community for continued ask if the state doesn't supplement or if we're not, don't make the efficiencies required to.
Do we know how aggressive other districts have been with putting STEM into the the grade schools?
Um, there's a couple of districts in our area that have STEM programs, but not access for every single student the way we did. That's unusual in the area and across the state that actually is what drew one of the new teacher. Um, to come to South Milwaukee to realize the, what's going on in that program.
So the four hundred and twenty one districts were once again a leader in education or the implementation of education?
Yeah, from the, the way in which we've chosen to approach it, yes.
And we owe the thanks to all the people that voted yes on the referendum that we can offer this to our children.
Yeah.
Great.
So another way that we've, um, we've been able to see the referendum in this year is in the raise that we provided to to staff. Um, so it's something we've worked closely on in the last, like in the last spring, talking about raises for staff. And something that we've been able to to hit the ground running this year and make sure that all staff have from the first day on. Usually we. Negotiate the current year's raise in the in the spring. This year it's it's in motion already. So we were able to see an above inflationary increase for all our staff with, uh, even higher raise. For staff who are in the earlier years of the the teaching profession, um, in order to. Provide them with an incentive to stay with the district. Uh, so that's an area that we have pride that we currently have. We've been also. Been able to provide, provide over six percent raises for our paraprofessionals and clerical staff as well. Um, and just getting closer and closer to the area average and even higher in some, some cases. In order to try to make, uh, retain those hard to fill positions. So as we look to twenty five, twenty six and the next four years of the referendum. Um, we're going to continue to work on on traffic safety measures, like we discussed, although it's might be difficult to get those objective standards for success. Um, something that we're going to continue to discuss and work on in the next couple of years here. We'll continue to work on this, the school, the the door safety measures. And potentially look to start testing it in the field at an elementary school. Um, and we'll continue to support the STEM programs out of those rooms as student needs develop. Um, and just in general, just continue the good work that the community has entrusted us to do.
So to go back to technology and network, um, with the addition of all these added cameras. Is part of the network having the broadband to.
Yeah, to expand the network in order to support some of it.
So we would have one localized, well, no, I thought getting into detail.
I I guess I don't want to misspeak and O'Brien is is here. But, but yeah, we would have to expand the network to some degree. I know, Brian, is there anything you would want to add?
Yeah, the, what, how much, how do we increase the broadband needed for these, all these new devices?
So surprisingly, the cameras coming back to our servers. Don't take up a ton of bandwidth, um, and it's all internal. So when you think about bandwidth, that's more out to the internet.
Okay.
All of our cameras are internal, right? So it's, we didn't have to make too many increases. That way it was more. Uh, adding things like switch space, things for them to plug into. Um, we had to purchase a couple of extra switches to. To make up for those extra, extra devices. That was about it.
Even like as we talk about this, the the, um, keyless entry points, we would have to add switches in or an entry points in order to. But gateways is what they're calling in hallways to speak to the the doors, so.
And then when you're looking at the pictures, it could be on a laptop, a center desktop. Is it also available like on iPads or?
Talking about the security camera software, definitely available on a laptop. Uh, I guess I haven't seen it on a tablet, but.
Okay. Um, well, the thought was if you have a security person, you know, they have the tab. I don't know if other schools use that, but. That'd be the next level instead of a centralized picture and then it broadcase out. It's like, oh, I've seen my view that I need while I'm. Working, I don't know.
Yeah, new, the new software that we're moving to for the cameras is fully web based.
Okay.
So we'll be able to access. Uh, from any web enabled device.
Alright, thank you. On the report?
Um, and just a reminder to everyone that there is a section on our website that says referendum updates. So that as promised, we're gonna let the community know exactly where we spent each one of those dollars that they were. Um, generous enough to support for our schools. And so there, we regularly add things to that as we have other. Things that we've spent the dollars on that we can make sure that people know where those dollars went.
We, we try to, like, as we replace smart boards that still work, but are just a little outdated, we try to, like. Sell those or anything or are they at this point, you know, fifteen, twenty years old and kind of?
Yeah, it's the, it's really difficult to sell technology in a lot of cases. When we can, we certainly do, but. So that's effectively a continued discussion we have is what do we do with our outdated technology?
They don't hear, right?
I am.
Okay, moving on to the recreation, so.